Okay, let's get started. And this is actually our third forum in the Caring for Our World series. And the first one, you should probably recall, dealt with climate change. And the second one dealt with our responsibility as Christians in this whole area of taking care of our world. And so starting today, we're going to start getting a little more specific about some of the practical things that we can do in this area of taking care of our world. And we're looking today specifically about how we can use power more efficiently. And so we have with us this morning Vern Iverson. I was going to introduce him, but as we talked, there's so much that needs to be seen. He's one of us. He's an Elk River person.
I'm Vern from Elk River.
That's it. He says that's all you have to say, so that's all I'm going to say. I want you to introduce yourself.
Thanks, Milo.
Welcome to Elk River.
Thank you. So I'm not very formal about anything, so, but again, I'm Vern from Elk River. My wife Leah, she taught school here for 40 years. And some of you have kids that went up to Wolf Ridge. She took kids up to Wolf Ridge Environmental Learning Center for 30 years. So that's kind of it. And I have three kids that went to high school here in Elk River. And I have four grandkids now, and with one on the way, one in the oven. Thank God. So my background is I worked for Medtronic as a research scientist, and I now serve as a volunteer. It's not elected, but as volunteer on the Elk River Energy Commission. And we consult and try to advise as much as possible the city council regarding energy issues. And energy is a big thing. Energy is, it involves everything. It's not just lights, you know? It's energy about the type of crops we plant. How do we fertilize the crops? How do we, the cars we drive, the electricity we use, the appliances in our house. Everything is based on energy. So I just wanted to, what I wanted to do is I wanted to get into the specifics of what the Elk River municipal utilities are doing. And they're doing a great. Now, I want to put a plug in for Elk River. The community, the city council and the community, and this is not a political statement, I'm just making a fact statement. They're doing really a great job here. They have a lot of incentives, and they are promoting a lot of really good technologies for our community to make the air better for us to breathe, the water clean to drink, the earth good to grow crops in and to be around. We have over 40 parks in Elk River, and many of you know that. And it's just incredible. They have so many wonderful things that they are doing with the incentives and rebates and everything. So, but what I wanted to do, and I didn't realize you had already done a thing on, a session on climate change. I kind of wanted to give a little quick review of, well, why do we want these rebates? Why do we want to do this? Why do we want to change our light bulbs over to LEDs? You know, I want to get to that and what we are doing in Elk River. But I want to do kind of a little background first. But you've already had this background, so I'm going to just fly through this. And if you have any questions, you know, just say, wait, 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 wait. Okay? Because anyways, this is kind of a background of why do we care? Why do we want to do what we want to do? So this was, just for this picture here, this was taken in 1968. It was the first, when they read, remember they read the Bible verses when they were circling the moon? Okay? That was the Apollo. So that was the first time that we had gotten a picture of the earth from the moon like this. That was 1968. And I'd mentioned earlier, everything that I show here is peer reviewed as far as science is concerned. What that means if there is a, peer review means that if you have something that you've discovered, you have to present that paper and two other independent scientists or scientific groups have to come up with the same results that you came up with, not talking to you, but just doing the same experiments. And they come up with the same results, and so it's three together, then that becomes what we call our theory or our working theories. Okay? So all the things I present here are based on peer reviewed data. It's not conspiracy. It's not just people's opinion. And what do they say? What's the joke? Without data, you're just another opinion, right? Well, this is based on, well, and it's good. You have to have opinions. That's great. But without, in science, you have to have data too. So, so the earth is but one country, mankind, our citizens. On the right-hand corner, I'm not sure you can see it, it says here, "Think globally and act locally." So everything that we do in Elk River has an effect, has a domino's effect of what's going on with, in Becker, in Big Lake, in Otsego, and now then Zimmerman. It all has an effect. And it doesn't seem that way, but it does. So this is the, taken from the Apollo, from the International Space Station. That little blue line you see there, that's the stratosphere. That's about 50, approximately 53 miles thick. And so I have a demonstration here. My grandkids love this. So if you reduced the size of this planet to this size of a beach ball, this would be the thickness, not this, not this, this sideways, that's how thick or how thin the atmosphere is covering the earth. I'll pass this around. So if you lay this down like that, that is how, that is that blue line that you see. Okay? So you just got an idea. Go ahead and, okay. So right now, we're putting about 110 million tons of man-made global warming pollutions into that thin shell of an atmosphere every, every 24 hours, which is a lot. Okay? I don't want to be alarmist, but that's a lot. And the main thing is that we are putting in the atmosphere is carbon dioxide, CO2, methane, and nitrous oxide. And they are the greenhouse gases that are acting, that are causing the earth to warm. And then here are some of the sources of the greenhouse gases. You can see here, I'm sorry, some of you may be blocked over here, but you have electrical generation, transportation here, land transport, fertilization of the crops. This releases nitrous oxide, that's what that's about. The burning of forests, crop production, industrial agriculture, industrial process. So right now, about 30 to 35% of our carbon dioxide comes from transportation, about another 30 to 35%, and the number's different, it varies, that's why I'm saying 30 to 35% comes from electrical generation. So between those two, between electrical generation and our transportation systems, which includes trains and trucks and cars and everything, trucks, you know, the whole thing, that's about 60, maybe up to 70% of our carbon dioxide is coming from those, just those two sources. So that's important to think about how we deal with that. Right now, the largest source of greenhouse gases that we have, the pollution is the burning of fossil fuels. And then this is, this is a demonstration here of this, your stratosphere, what happens is your sun comes down and some of the, some of the infrared, that's the heat, you know, you can feel infrared when you stand around a campfire and you feel that hotness coming from the campfire, that's the infrared heat that's coming off of it. Some of it is reflected back into the atmosphere, and some of it is reflected back down on the earth, which is a good thing because it keeps the earth pretty, pretty warm. Well, what happens when you get, when you have too much of the greenhouse gases, it forms a blanket. And this blanket literally is surrounding the earth and holding more of that heat in. And about 93% of the extra heat that's trapped by the, by the carbon dioxide, the greenhouse gases, that's being absorbed by the oceans. And if you've been watching recently, the last three or four years, you know, you've got this category one hurricane, all of a sudden it's a category four hurricane. And, and they're saying, oh my goodness, it's coming over the Gulf of Mexico. The last, the last two we just had in Florida, it moved from a category one to a category four, four and a half, almost a five, then dropped down a little bit before it hit. But they were saying, oh, the water temperature is 85, 87, 88 degrees. That's, that's the Gulf of Mexico. Well, the temperature is coming from the fact that it's absorbing the extra energy that the greenhouse gases are keeping in around the earth that's being absorbed by the oceans. At the same time, as the air is warming, when air gets warm, it can hold more humidity, it can hold more water vapor. So you're finding that heavy precipitation events occur two to three times more often in Minnesota than in 20 years. All of us are old enough to realize when it rained, when we were growing up, it was nice. It kind of rained. It was nice. Run outside and play in the street and stuff like that. What is it raining like now? When a rainstorm comes now, most of the time, it's downpours. And you're getting flooding, and you're getting all this flash flooding that's happening, not just here in Minnesota, but all over the country, all over the world. And again, that's because the atmosphere is holding more water vapor because of the warmth. It's just physics. Oh, this is in Tucson, Arizona, just a video. I'm not sure if you can see here, but this is just a downpour where it literally was just flooding the city. It's just literally just unbelievable. So I just had that, I wanted to share that with you. That was kind of cool. So, okay, so that's good. That's the, that's the background. Now, the positive thing is the green energy progress, worldwide capacity for wind, we were looking at projecting about 30 gigawatts of power from wind by 2010. And the reality was by 2023, we did 30 times that. So that's a really good positive thing. So electrical generation in Minnesota, this is really great because Excel Energy is doing a lot for, for helping us. We met the goals, our goals of four years ahead of time. Minnesota, we're pretty good here, you know? And, I mean, we are, really. And the Sherco Solar One opened just about a week ago. And I was able to go with the Elk River Energy Commission for a tour of the solar plant, which is going to replace Becker. And right now, they have three generating, coal generating plants. Sherco number two coal has been shut down already, and that's been replaced by wind and now by solar. And the solar plant is going to have, they just opened this, like I said, a week ago, it's going to have 1.8 million solar panels. It's going to be on 5,000 acres. And the acreage is Northern State's Power, it's called Excel now, but many of you remember Northern State's Power. They purchased this land, and that land was used for potatoes or it was in land bank. Okay? It was not something that they were, you know, producing food. And that's what Northern Space, or Excel owned that land, and now they're utilizing that. So these, but this is the breakdown. Eventually, this area here for coal is going to be gone, hopefully by 2030. So that will not be releasing any carbon dioxide into the atmosphere anymore. Okay. So global wind can supply 40 times over all the energy we need. Solar is incredible. This, this is where really has made a lot of progress. The solar energy market will grow at one gigabyte per year. So I thought, okay, well, what does one gigabyte mean to me? When I saw this, I went, well, what does that mean? Well, that powers 750,000 homes for a year. One gigabyte powers 750,000 homes per year. It's a lot. It's a lot. It's a lot of power. That was the projection. The reality is that we exceeded the goal by 17%. And by 2018, we exceeded that goal by 109 times. So the reason that Excel Energy is going, there's lots of reasons. One of the reasons Excel Energy is going for the solar is because it's the cheapest. It's just absolutely cheap to, and they last 35 to 40 years. When the solar panels are done, they are 95% recyclable. They do not end up in the landfill here in Elk River. They take all the material, all the silicon from them, all the aluminum, all the metal, and it's recycled, made into new solar panels and put them up for another 40 years. Okay? So yeah, it's wonderful. I mean, I was over here at the, I was over here at the farmer's market two weeks ago when they had the EV event, and had someone come up to me and says, oh, their solar panels, they're going to end up in the junk heap. And I said, where did you hear that? I don't know. He heard us, he heard it someplace. But I said, no, that's not, that's not the case. So Elk River is in the upper 11% of the Green Step Cities. But that is a program for, in the state of Minnesota, of, there's kind of a friendly competition of who could be the greenest, the greenest city. Well, we were, actually, we were number two or number three. But then other cities kind of looked at us, and they've been working really hard, and we've kind of moved down the chart. But we're doing really, really great. So, and now Elk River is now using 100% renewable energy on all of the municipal buildings. 100%. Yeah, that's great. I mean, Minneapolis is committed to 100% renewable energy by 2022. They are still in the process, and they're going by 2023 to be citywide. And I just looked it up yesterday, and they did not meet that goal at 2022, but they're still on that track, and they're still working towards that goal, and that's what counts. And St. Paul and St. Louis Park are also committed to using 100% renewable electricity for all of their municipal activities and eventually moving in for, for all the houses eventually. So what can we do? We can plant trees. There's a worldwide goal right now to plant 1 trillion trees, and that, every time you cut a tree down, you've got to add a tree. I mean, so that's total gain. It's total gain. And about a mature tree absorbs about 90 pounds of carbon dioxide per year. So it's, the best mechanism we have right now for cleaning our atmosphere is a tree. And you put a bunch of these trees together, it's called a forest. That's it. I mean, it's really simple. God did something for us, and we just have to follow his lead. Okay, so what are we, what we are doing is working. We just have to keep doing more of it and keep on that track. The average person produces about 16.5 tons of carbon dioxide. Now, that means everything we use, the clothes we buy, the cars we drive, everything we do, all that put together, you know, adds up to about 16.5 tons of carbon dioxide. So what we can do, we can walk, ride our bikes, and that's really good for us, right? Our object in motion stays in motion. That's what I talk to people when they are saying, oh, I'm getting older. I say, well, just stay in motion, stay in motion as much as possible. Also, you can use less plastic, bring your own bags. Elk River has these available. There's a, we have about five or six of them in the trunk of our car. We always take them in. Sometimes when I forget that bag and I've only got a few items, I just hand carry it. I don't take any more plastic bags. Five trillion bags being used in the world per year. That number is incomprehensible. I can understand, I look at my checking account, and I can understand, okay, I got to pay that bill, and I'm going to be about $100 short. I can understand that. I can't understand what five trillion means. I mean, I'm only, maybe you do, but I don't. But most of them end up in the ocean or landfill, and it takes over 1,000 years, some of the plastics, some of the newer plastics, you know, but the older plastics take over 1,000 years to degrade. And as they degrade, they become microplastics. They don't really, really break down, but they become very, very small particles which get in the air, which we can inhale, or the fish and wildlife ingest that. So use, use those cloth bags, and they're, you know, they're, they're easy to use. Fly only when necessary, do staycations, we do that as much as possible. Buy green energy from utility, yes, that's a program that Elk River has. It's a free, it's a clean energy choice. For $3 more per month, if your bill is $78, you can get the bill up to $81, and that would give you 100% renewable energy delivered to your house. You don't have to put solar panels up. But it does cost, it does cost money to management and manage that and to get the power from your wind and solar into the grid and into your house. So that's where the money goes. Also, you can consider things like join a climate organization. You can recycle at home and in the public. And you, you, everybody's doing this already. I'm just, remember what I said? What we're doing is working, we just got to keep doing more? Yeah, you're doing this already. Consider your food options, support sustainable brands, and be thrifty with your wardrobe. If it's not, your clothes are not worn out, then just don't buy new clothes if you're worn out. So our world depends on it, and our future generations depend upon it. So Elk River Municipal Utilities, we have multiple rebates available. And you know what? I forgot to, I forgot to link my computer to my hot, but this is an active website. I'll get it, I'll bring it up in a few seconds. Yeah, so I can get that, but I will bring that up for you in a few seconds here and show you that, that website. Has all the different rebates and stuff, and you, it's important that you get on there and look at that. Clean Energy Choice, I just mentioned that. AV charging off-peak, automatic payments. Automatic payments saves money because you're, and saves resources because they're not using paper. EV charging, I don't know why that did that. I didn't do that. I didn't do that. But anyways, so I, I did, my wife and I have been driving electric vehicles since 2017. Elk River made this up for me. I appreciate the service they did. So since 2017, we've driven 184,000 miles electric. We've never ran out of electricity. We never got stalled on the highway. All these, I hear all these stories, these horror stories, that's never happened to us. And I don't know anybody who's, I know that drives an electric vehicle that that has happened to. I'm sure it has happened sometime, but I do not know of anybody like that. So I'll just give you a quick breakdown here. The gas equivalent, if I drove 184,000 miles, the average miles per gallon in the United States according to AAA, all vehicles is 20.9 miles. It doesn't seem very high, but that's, that's the average. Some of our cars obviously are 45, 50. Okay, I know that. But the average is 20.9. So that would require about 8,800 gallons of gas. And then we just, I just multiplied that, and this changes, I had to pick a number, it was about 355. So I multiplied that out, that would cost about $30,000 to buy that gas. Okay, so I bought $3,000 worth of electricity. So I subtracted that. My savings approximately were $27,000 for my family since 2017. That's real money. So the biggest thing is that I, that I think is the most important is that Leah and I have not put 176,000 pounds of carbon dioxide in the atmosphere. Every gallon of gas that you burn releases 20 pounds of carbon dioxide into the atmosphere. That's a lot. That's a lot. You burn 10 gallons, that's 200 pounds. You burn four gallons, 20 gallons, that's 400 pounds. We don't think much about it. You know, I used to think, well, I don't drive very far. I only go to and from, you know, Elk River, Leah teaches school here. We go over to Cub Foods and back, go over to Walmart and back, and da, 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 da. Every gallon that you burn puts 20 gallons in the atmosphere. So the cost was about 1.9 cents per mile compared to about 15 to 18 cents for a gas car. And basically, we've had very, very little or no maintenance on the car. I just wanted to add that in because I was talking about off-peak charging, because we do off-peak charging, it's very, very economical.
Vern?
Yes.
Can I ask you just a quick question about that?
Yes.
I often hear an argument from people where they go, the batteries don't last very long, and then the batteries are going to cost me, you know, 15 grand or whatever we place. What's your experience that you've had with the batteries?
Okay, so right, right now, the batteries, now, my car is two years old, two and a half years old. That battery, the lifespan of that is about 500,000, between 300 and 500,000 miles. So that's the battery. And when the battery is done, then there are two big companies. One is called Redwood Materials out of Sparks, Nevada. They take all car batteries and all of our lithium ion batteries, whether it's your phone, whether it's your, your little battery, AAA's, double A's, C, D sized batteries. They take all those batteries, and they reprocess, and they, they take, get 95% of all the metals in those batteries, they recover that. They sell that back to Panasonic, and Panasonic, that's, that's who's buying from them. And Panasonic makes new batteries for your phones, new batteries for your cars, new batteries for your weed whipper, your blower, the electric blower. So that's it. But to go back, that's more than you want to know. But to go back 300 to 500,000 miles, now the new batteries coming out are million mile batteries. I don't know, I kept my Honda Civic hybrid. We ran that for 276,000 miles. I don't know of any car that, I haven't used a car more than 300,000 miles. But anyways, the batteries, the current batteries that I have, the old batteries, so to speak, two-year-old, that's 300,000 to 500,000 miles. So again, a lot of the, you know, you hear a lot of these, not, I don't want to call them conspiracy. Uneducated people, no, no, that's not the right word. No, no, no. I don't want to say that. Was that a Freudian slip? I don't know. I, I didn't mean it that way. People who have not done their research, how's that sound? Thank you. God bless you. Forgive me. Question.
How far can you go on your car?
330, 330 miles.
And then you need to be recharged. Here's my real question. I have a sister-in-law that lives in Dallas, Texas. If the longest distance that I can go is 300 or a little bit less or a little bit more, it's going to take me five days to get to Dallas, Texas. If I stay at a motel overnight, and there are other electric cars there, I'm going to have to make a reservation for the charging station. If somebody else has already encumbered their life, their charging stations, I might have to get up at 2:00 in the morning to go out and recharge my car. So it looks to me like rather than electric vehicle, hybrid would be the way to go.
Hybrids are very, very good, especially the plug-in hybrids. Many of the plug-in hybrids will give you 50 to 75 miles on the battery, and then it cooks, cooks over, switches over to the gas engine. If you have a hybrid and you're living in Elk River and you're just doing this back and forth, you're driving 100% on electrons. 100%. You're not using hydrocarbons. And so if you want to do long-distance travel and you have a hybrid, that's fine. You can charge it up overnight, and then you can drive, your 50, 75 miles kicks into the, the gas, and you go on from there. It's a very good transition. In the future, and I'm saying probably five years, 10 years from now, the energy density of the battery will be the same as the energy density in gasoline or diesel fuel. And then you'll have a 500-mile, 600-mile, well, actually, there are cars, right, there are electric cars, they have 600-mile range, but they are $180,000? Whoa! I mean, but you can still, you can get that. It's the lucid, the lucid air, that one has that. But again, I, who's going to put $186,000 into a sedan? I'm not going to do that.
I'm a retired chemist.
Oh, that's my background too.
I had a weekly magazine called Chemical and Engineering News, and I keep watching for battery developments such as you just mentioned, where the price of the cars are not going to be $180,000. Haven't seen that article yet, but I know the chemists are working on it.
And so I, what the information I've read is about, we're getting about 4% to 6% increase in charge density per year with the batteries. So it's going to take a little bit of time. It's not, you know, it's not like a sea change where all of a sudden there's 100% gain. No. But with the chemistry, with, and you know, science, science is very methodical, very careful, you know, just, we do one thing, and then we apply that, and if it works, then we try something new, that works, we apply it, we try something new, and it doesn't work, we have to go back to where we were. You know, that's what, that's what we do in chemistry and physics. So that's the same with that. But that's a good point. Yes, question?
So thanks for sharing your numbers. You know, from what I've heard with charging vehicles, and even charging at your house, that it's very expensive. Yeah, so I travel a little bit for work, and I was down in Arizona, which may be different. The guy had a Tesla, and he said, no matter how much I drive, it costs me $20 every night for me to plug in my vehicle to charge it. I was like, how does that make any sense? So your numbers, I'm very shocked that they're so small on the electricity side?
Yeah.
Which is awesome. I mean, yeah.
So here is, here is the, the app on my phone, and the last 31 days for my, for the car, I used 396 kilowatt-hours, 396 kilowatt-hours. Okay? And for the last 31 days, that Okay, and for the last thirty-one days, that cost me twenty-five dollars.
And are you plugging it in?
Every night.
Oh, you plug it in.
I plug it in.
For the hybrids, we don't have to do that.
A hybrid, if you have a plug-in hybrid, yes, you have to plug it in and charge up the battery. But that's a plug-in hybrid. Just a plain hybrid, the battery just assists you with, with the acceleration. And which is good. That's good too. But the plug-in hybrid is even better than just a regular hybrid. But anyways, so what you were saying, this is, this is data. So
So are you, I'm guessing you're probably charging at?
Yes, I am.
Hundred percent of the time?
And off-peak.
Nothing, nothing off, on the way to somewhere, right? Not using a Tesla charger or whatever, right?
Well, I do that too.
You do, okay.
But the last thirty-one days, I have not been in traveling. And if it wa, if I did that, it would have been on here.
Oh, sure. Okay, so it does, it's not only your house.
Yes, right.
Okay, interesting.
Yeah. Okay. That's, any more questions? Those are great questions. Okay. Okay, so then also Elk River buys their electricity from Minnesota Municipal Power Association. And forty percent of that energy from that association is green energy. Now, and these, they buy that energy from Xcel. They buy it from Becker Coal Plant. They buy it from the Monticello Nuclear Plant or there are other plants around the, around the state. They just buy it and then they resell it to us. So off-peak, when you're charging your cars or when you're using off-peak electricity in Elk River, six cents per kilowatt hour. Normally, it runs about twelve, almost thirteen cents per kilowatt. So it's half price. Okay, then I wanted to go here. And this is the website for Elk River. And all of these rebates you have available. There we go. So these, this is the website for Elk River, for the Elk River Public Utilities. And you can see all of the different things that they have on here. What you want to do by bill pay, which save money because you don't use paper anymore. Or the residential rebates are over here. You have different rebate programs. The, my, it takes a little bit longer than, because I'm using my phone right here to get up there, but you have the different charging capacities for cars. You have applied for home efficiency. And now, again, these are just the local rebates. Okay, then there's federal and state rebates that go on top of them, that you can pile them together. So there's lots of things you can do. And this is a good, a good site to go on to, really. And just Elk River Municipal Utilities. And let's see. Okay. Okay, so time for church? Or no, is any question? Oh, questions. Yes.
All of these, like the Becker Plant and all that, how much of that energy is being sold to other countries? Or are we selling any of it?
No.
We're not. It's all these states.
All of that power that we generate there is being used in Elk River, Becker, well, Minnesota. And eventually, like I said, and then by two thousand thirty, hopefully, all the coal plant will be gone and just solar and wind will be driving it. And it'll be, it's locally used.
Right, thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question on recycling.
Yes, sir.
Is, you have the big bin there, right? How much of that is actually recycled and how much goes to landfill? Do you have any statistics or data or any kind of?
Yes, we, the Energy Commission went to Republic Recycling. And Republic Recycling, when you put that in there, about, they're, they're about eleven percent waste. So about eighty-nine percent of what goes into those big bins and goes to Republic is recycled. And another incredible fact is that when they pick that up in the morning, between six and eight hours later, the, the stuff that went, left your house, Republic has got it in Minneapolis. It's already been processed. It's already on the dock and it's already being shipped to companies who are using it. In six to eight hours of time. There's a market, yes. So that is really important. That's a really great question. But about eleven percent of it, and they, at Republic, they say, when in doubt, throw it out. If you're looking at your recycle, this is what they told us. When in doubt, throw it out. Put it in the garbage. But ninety, eighty-nine percent is recycled and reused. And they do a fantastic job. These machines, they work so fast. I took video of it. You could hardly see it with your eyes, how these, these machines are sorting stuff. It's all done with photo diodes and everything. Another question here. There was another question. Yeah.
Yeah, Vern. When thinking about solar panels, often I hear people saying that we lose the farmland. Is there any kind of dual use between farming and solar panels or anything like that happening?
Yes, there's a place right now in Big Lake. It's called Agro-Voltaics. Agro-Voltaics. And I've actually got pictures. I don't know if I can pull it up, but I've actually got pictures of it. What they are doing is they are growing crops between the solar panels. Now, I asked Xcel when I was up there what they had planned to do. Xcel had, is putting in twenty-three different species of natural, uh, local species of flowers and plants. They were not at this time planning to put in any agriculture between it, but they're bringing in sheep to, to mow, so they don't have to mow it anymore. Not goats, because they chew on the wires. But the sheep, no, this is what they told me. And I, they do. They chew on everything. But the sheep will take care of that. And this Agro-Voltaics in Big Lake, they now have three farmers that raise crops between their solar panels. And they can use another ten farmers to go in there right now, as of right now. And they prepare the area between the, between the cells. And they've got, their panels are smelt a little bit higher and they're a little bit wider apart. And then you can get tractors in between them. But yes, it's right down the street. You go, you go down, you go over here, go to twenty, what goes into Monticello? Twenty-five or twenty-four? Twenty-five? Okay, take a left. You're going down, going down twenty-five. And about a mile from, before you get to that intersection, just before the bridge that goes into Monticello, take a left, you see the solar panels. That's where they're growing, growing between the panels.
Growing plants between the panels.
Yeah, and food. They're growing food. And they sell it to farmer's markets and to grocery stores as much as they can sell.
Vern, do you have time for just two more quick ones?
Yeah.
Okay, next quick one. A trillion trees. Do we have enough space on, and again, I'm just asking questions they hear.
I know, I know.
Do, do, do we have space on planet for the twelve trillion trees or whatever?
I, I don't know. I, I guess, you know, if you would just do a quick Google search for me and say, how many trees are on planet Earth? And maybe, it's gotta be in the trillions, right?
You'd think.
But I never, that's a really great question. I never asked it. I never asked what, where would you plant a trillion trees? But it's a hundred and thirty trees per person. So think globally and act locally. We could plant some trees in our yard or we can, you know, have a choice, like when you fly someplace, you know, Delta gives you a choice of, for the carbon, for that, you can plant trees for that. So you can say, all right, plant a tree or plant two trees or ten trees, whatever.
All right. My last question is, I've also done, I've, I've read that the, with the new technologies coming out, like large language models, you know, artificial intelligence, that all the new energy that we're creating through renewables is getting gobbled up by these new technologies and we're having problems retiring the energy we're trying to replace.
Exactly. That's exactly true.
That's, that's, that's a problem that we're facing.
They are, they, it's, they're just hungry energy, hungry energy consumers. The AI, the AI computers, the supercomputers are doing that, but we've had other computers, we haven't noticed it, but like even when Cray was a big computer about twenty years ago. You know, that's, it's a huge energy consumer. And all the, all the supercomputers that we have that model our atmosphere and we watch, you watch the news at night and we see all these big graphics, you know, and all these guys showing, they are just, just gobbling up energy. So this is a situation that humanity will have to deal with. And I think we have the technology to deal with it, kind of like what Xcel is doing right now at Becker. We can figure it out. So if you took a one hundred mile by one hundred mile square and let's say, put it in Nevada. You don't want it together. You want it distributed all over the states. But here's an example. You take one hundred miles by one hundred mile square and put all solar panels on it. That would be enough electricity to cover every need that the United States has for producing steel, every, every need you need. Then you take a one mile by one mile square like that and you put batteries in that, one mile by one mile. That is the battery backup that you need so you can watch TV at night. You have power. So on one hundred miles by one hundred mile square, one mile by one mile square, solar, solar panels, battery backup. Now, again, you don't want to put all that in Nevada. You want to distribute that, like we're doing here. We have, it's called distributed, the distributed net. You have it in Connecticut. You have some of that hundred miles, part of the hundred mile square is in Connecticut. It's in Texas. It's in Arizona. It's in Washington, Seattle, Washington. But add, you add the composite, you add it all up, one hundred mile by one hundred mile will do it.
Do you know how much of the one hundred by one hundred we have right now?
I wish we had it all. Praise me to God, we had it right now. I don't, I don't know. That's a great question, Chuck. It's really.
Thank you, Vern.
Okay, you're welcome. God bless you. God bless you. I know every single one of you are thinking about what you are doing, because you've got grandkids, right?
Yes.
What about the rest of the world? What about Europe? What about Africa?
Okay, Europe. Okay, so right now, the leader, the leader in solar production is China. They producing more of their power in China than any other, per capita, than any other place on Earth. And then there's countries now in, there's country, I just read this two weeks ago, three weeks ago. There's countries in Africa, they're skipping the, what we call the industrialization of running wires and stuff like that for power. They're going directly to the solar panels because they're so cheap. So in the villages, these little grass hut villages, they have these solar panels, they have batteries and then they have their schools attached right to it. And they, they can run their computers and they have this, what's, what's the new thing? Starlink. There's a new Starlink system that's being set up for internet. That's being used. So actually, the United States is pretty good with that, but we're kind of behind what Europe has done in Germany. And yeah, I mean, I hate to admit that because it kind of gets my ego going, but yeah.
We just saw in France and Italy where they're, they've got grapevines growing under, under the solar panels for their wine making.
Oh.
Because they're using that.
They need the sheep.
But they also have the sheep.
Right, right.
There too, on the, on the, some of the agricultural farms that were.
So then you gotta eat the sheep, right?
You can.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. God bless you. Thank you.
We have another farm on November third, solar, what's that, solar panels?
Solar panels.
Solar panels.